To the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Robyn, can you please take the floor?
Ms. Cherry.
President.
Dr. Connors.
President.
Mr. King.
Here.
Dr. Nelson.
Here.
Mr. Patel.
Here.
Ms. Rivers.
Here.
Ms. Alguacan Cowan.
President.
Ms. Smith.
Here.
Ms. Stafford.
President.
Mr. Quar.
Thank you. Hereby it is known that the Piscataway Township Board of Education has complied with the notification requirements of the Open Public Meeting Act for the announcement of this meeting date in place on April the fourth, two thousand and twenty five, in the following matter: posting of the public notice on the posting board for the Board of Education in the administration building, email notification to the newspapers serving Piscataway, the Home News Tribune, and the Courier-News, email notification filed with the municipal clerk at the municipal building on Hose Lane. This meeting is being videotaped. This recording is not an official record but supplement to the minutes and is intended only as a source of information that the public may utilize at a later date to familiarize themselves with the board's activities. Executive session, being resolved that the board adjourns to executive session for the purpose of review and discussion of personnel agenda, litigation, HIV monthly reports, and other matters pursuant to law, NJS eight ten, Ceni colon four dash twelve B. Can I have a motion?
Of course.
Can I have a second?
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
We're in executive session.
Second?
Second.
We are now reconvening and opening in public session. Good evening, good evening, good evening. Let me welcome my student representatives and congratulations Derek on your appointment to that position. I know your mom is going to be proud.
Thank you.
We welcome you, we're excited to see you. Between you and Tyler, I know this is going to be an interesting dive section of the high school and all the events that are going on up there. Because you two are definitely in a lot of activities and know a lot of people, but most importantly, I know you're going to bring it all back here to us. So, here's what we want to do. So, here's what we want to do. We want you to introduce yourself for people who don't know you. That way, they can get to know you, they'll know your face and they'll know your name and we'll start with you.
So, hello everyone, my name is Derek Lopez. Nice to meet you all, I'm very excited to be here, very grateful that I can be here as well. So, shall I just dive into what I have to say?
Of what?
Yeah, cool. So, regarding student government, our next full body meeting is going to be on September 22nd. We recently had an executive board meeting, kind of just with everyone and some future possible candidates as we have two open positions, which is corresponding secretary and our sophomore representative. So, we will kind of be having unplanned elections to kind of fill everything up, but we should get that picture pretty quickly. We do have a few events coming up such as security week, which will be October 20th to 24th. The club fair on the 29th to 30th, fall decoration night on the 23rd of October, fall pop rally on the 24th of October, and homecoming on the 25th of October. National English Honor Society applications are now open, they will be due September 19th. And the TRI-M, so like the music honor society induction is October 13th at 7:00 PM. Regarding the junior class of 2027, our first executive meeting will be this upcoming Monday on the 15th. And we'll be having a full body meeting, but the date is to be determined for that. They should follow shortly after that as well. Many other clubs are also starting back up again. For example, International Club of Cultural Arts, ICCA, has their first board meeting September 17th. And their full board, full body meeting on the 24th quickly after. They'll be moving some stuff up such as garbanite to be moved closer to the actual celebration, so closer to October. And many more clubs are moving forward as well. Similar to what Tyler will be saying there too, we will be having college visits. Over 60 college reps, the juniors and seniors. And the mock trial team is going to have their interest meeting on the 18th. And they already have many members according to the head. Freshman seminar classes are also taking freshmen on tours of the school and getting them more introduced so the freshmen can be more comfortable and calm and kind of getting used to the classes instead of being scared, but they're getting used to the building now, that's all I can say.
Very nice, very nice, very nice. We're off to a great start. Hi Tyler, how are you?
I'm good, how are you?
Good, good.
Hi everybody, I'm Tyler West, senior rep, junior rep last year, but just introduce myself again.
You warmed up Tyler.
I hope everybody have a great relaxing summer, relaxing, right? Everybody? I'll take that, you know. So, just to get back, the first two weeks of school, everybody just getting back into the swinging things. There's not many major differences within the school, only minor differences that our Anthony gym is being redone right now. So, for the seniors and juniors that have gym in there, right now they're just having to be at F-100 and go outside throughout the gym. But that hasn't been too much of a problem lately with them, with them the students. And then, to get into the interest meetings and stuff that Derek touched on a little bit, National Honor Society also had their interest meeting today, just to talk about the application process and like help groups that they have for students that want to apply and write their essay and get all that done so they could apply to get into the, into the Honor Society and how it can help with their college applications. Because they also said that not many people apply and they want to get that number up. So, they were just talking to us today about all of that and trying to get us to apply for that. And then, also Derek touched on the club fairs, and then the club fairs is on the 29th and 30th. And that's just when every club in the school will be in our patent gym. And then, they'll have their own like representatives sitting at a table. And then, students, usually the freshmen, sophomores will come in and then they'll walk around, see what clubs they're actually interested in and what clubs they want to join and be in so that they can get into outside activities within the school. And then, for seniors, the seniors are having their meetings with the counselors both individually and as a group. So, the counselors will come into our gym classes and talk to us about what we need to do if we want to pursue going to a four-year college or a two-year college and how to get the application process going and to talk to the counselors and not leave them in the dark and then have them rushing to get our process done. And then, it helps us and then it also helps them. So, they were talking to us about that. Also, Derek touched on is our senior college visit week. So, as he said, over 60 schools are coming such as Tulane, Hofstra, Berkeley, Delaware, Drew, et cetera. They're all coming within the first three days and it starts on September 16th. So, you would just go into the app that recalls score and then students register and then they get a pass and they can go out and then talk to those representatives of those colleges that are coming in and see if they like the college, want to pursue the college, want to apply to that college and just get more knowledge about that college before actually diving in and doing the whole application process for them. And then, to end it off, our sports are starting off, so football, soccer, boys and girls, volleyball, field hockey, all the little stuff. They're all starting off, starting off to a great start, getting our school square going and yeah.
Thank you, thank you. A senior, how do you feel?
Um, good, you know. Not too much to say, I mean, I like having early release though, but I-
Oh, you're one of those 10 o'clock go-home children?
Listen though.
Yeah, I'm listening because I have one, so I get it.
I was taking classes at Nederstags College Fair credits right now and then working, so.
Good for you. That's good. See, I can appreciate that.
Yeah.
Yeah, but it's been fun.
Okay, good, good. Glad it's starting off great, welcome you two gentlemen. Excited for the year we're going to have here with you coming back. Like I said, feeding us the information of what's going on at the high school, what events. You know, if you need help with anything, there's something we can volunteer at, something we can attend. Always let us know, give us the specifics of it. That way, we can put in our calendars and support you, the students any way that we can. But thank you and now I know you can now go home, you've done your job for the night. Even though I know it's early in the school year, still don't want you out late. We want you to get your schedule acclimated and rolling. Thank you for coming out and doing a great job tonight.
Welcome Derek.
Thank you.
Yeah, the boys' bar for the soccer was this afternoon.
Thanks for that update.
Yeah, Colonial, they beat Colonial.
Okay.
Two goals in the last five or six minutes. I attended the game right before I came here.
All right, next on our agenda, hey, we have my president's report. Well, I'm going to start this off briefly, I would like to do a moment of silence and remembrance of 9/11. Thank you everyone. That day is just like it was today, it's still very touching, it's still having a huge effect on us as a country individually. And most importantly, there's still a lot of healing that needs to be done that will never feel fully be recovered or mended, but most importantly, to acknowledge it, give it the respect that it's due and try to keep moving forward because that's what those who are no longer here with us would want us to do. My president's report, so for October 25, 26 school year, we're off to an excellent start. Teachers and students are settling back into their classroom routines, ready to get to work and tackle the challenges to make this a successful year. A big thank you goes to the unsung heroes in our maintenance and transportation departments for doing the work that too often goes unrecognized. Our maintenance team completed a number of upgrades to our schools over the summer, including overhauls of classrooms, bathrooms, and offices. Our custodians did an amazing job getting our schools back in order after a summer of maintenance and cleaning. And aside from small glitches that are to be expected at the start of a new school year, our transportation department did a wonderful job of getting our students to school and back home safely with minimum concerns. And we want to thank all of them for all their hard work, all the hours they put in, but most importantly, for having everything ready for the opening of the school year. We start our back-to-school nights next week with the middle school starting first on September the 16th. The full schedule is in your tonight superintendent's report newsletter and on our district's website and parent square. We encourage all parents to attend and learn firsthand about their children's daily experiences to help them start the year off strong. You will get to meet their teachers, see their classrooms, learn their schedules and more. At least one board of education members will be in attendance at each back-to-school night to support our administration and staff. And we're looking forward to meeting and speaking with as many families as we can so that we can move forward as a team in support of our students. I want to thank everybody for this awesome start to 25, 26, including all of my fellow board members. For all the hours you put in volunteering, attending things, but most importantly, making sure we're doing everything we can do to make sure the students and our staff are supported, know that they're supported and getting the best of what we have to offer, what is available to us. I encourage everybody, take care of yourself, like I tell all of the teachers and I'm going to take care of themselves. Your physical and your mental health is important as well. If you're not up to par, let it be known so we can pow-wow, get together, have some grapes, some watermelon or some wine, whatever comes up with the line, but let's just make sure we support each other. Because it's challenging because we're doing this here, but we're also taking care of our families at home along with multitasking with all the other things that we have going on. So, a lot of times, we think we gotta, we gotta, we gotta, but we really don't. We may need to and we may want to, but we don't have to. But I want to thank you for all the sacrifices and all the pushing encouragement that we give to each other. And if you need any additional support, like I say, reach out. Nancy's always got an extra hooty-hoot in her and I know over to the right of me, I know Ms. Brenda's got words of encouragement. And if you want all the facts, hit Mr. Time up, he got you. And over here, Prashant's in the making, so he's got a little bit of everything over there, but he's keeping it on a down-low, but it's all there too. But most importantly, I want to thank the administration for all the work you put in over the summer. I want to thank the union representative for my teachers because the-
My God, this is my report tonight.
I'm sorry, I didn't see your report.
Just keep going, go on.
She gets to go first.
I'll just go ditto.
For all the work your teachers put in off the clock, on the clock, but most importantly, coming with a fresh start, a new beginning and saying, okay, let's make this a successful year. Not only for themselves, but for all their students, encouraging one another and supporting one another, but letting it be known, hey, this is P. Way and this is how we do it, we're family.
That's right.
And that concludes my president's report. I'm sorry if I took some of your information.
I could just say ditto.
And now, we have our superintendent's report.
Thank you very much Ms. Cherry, and I have to just say, I love the way Piscataway does things. I do, I've been around, you know. I'm just going to tell you, this is the start of my Derek, Tyler, are you sitting? This is the start of my 50th year.
That's fine.
What'd he say? What did he say, Mr. King?
He said, "That's fine, that's great."
Okay, but this board is paying for my filler over here. Okay, superintendent's report, thank you Ms. Cherry. Like you, I echo the comments about 9/11. It's been identified on our district signs and we acknowledge and recognize this day. And let us all have a silent thought that our children never have to witness this again. You know, we all have a memory from that day, but we don't want our children to have that. I'd like to acknowledge Mr. Rubin, our legal counsel, Mr. Rubin. We are pleased to announce that David Rubin has been recognized in the 2026 edition of the Best Lawyers in America.
Nice.
Only the top 5% of all practicing lawyers in the U.S. were selected by their peers for inclusion. Mr. Rubin, excellent. I've had the pleasure of working you prior to Piscataway, really well done. And today, we got an announcement as to all the presentations Mr. Rubin will be given. So, we're glad you're with us and we recognize and value your expertise and your support.
Thank you.
Tonight, I'd also like to acknowledge the Piscataway Township Police Department under the leadership of Director Stiles. The police department working with Dr. Lotman, we've had meetings with them this summer. And they welcomed, formally welcomed all the students of our district, the police department by visiting the Eisenhower School on September 8th. I'd like to thank Captain Cash and Captain Smith. So, thank you very much and thank you Dr. Lotman. We had a very good opening to school, excellent. Our focus with this year, we have three primary areas of focus in our district. We're working on the collaborative classroom, the implementation of generative artificial intelligence, and the rollout of the open, I always get it wrong. Open what?
Court.
I thought it was open court. Openshore literacy program. Our administrators, supervisors, and all of the teachers who attended professional learning this summer will enhance the delivery of the program for our children. This year, like Ms. Cherry, we must be thanking alike. I'd like to acknowledge areas, not in order of importance. The position of superintendent manages about 22 structures within the school district. And the job, primary job of the superintendent is to form a cohesive relationship between all the structures. And this is any organization in the service of primarily our children. And that can go in all structures. The first one I'd like to acknowledge is transportation. We transport over 7,000 students a day in addition to after-school activities. And that department, I am writing a formal acknowledgement to them, the first day of school went off without a glitch. Nothing, not one parent communication, nothing. So, please, they get our children here safely and then they bring them home safely. Like Ms. Cherry, I have to acknowledge the maintenance department. Our buildings are immaculate. Those members of the department don't miss anything. And when I visit schools, I go in the kitchen, the bathrooms, I keep notes on, post-it notes in my pocket. I see it all, outside, the grounds, the placement of cones, the placement of signs. And watching parents drop off, the first day of school, I had to come back to the office. I went down Holly Road, which was bumper-to-bumper traffic. The principal was out there directing traffic with the police. I had to turn around and come back to the office. I would have never gotten in, never. And we had, didn't matter if the superintendent couldn't get in. What would have mattered is if our parents and children couldn't get gotten in. So, the maintenance department, Ms. Cherry also outlined some areas. And please be on the lookout, we're doing a video that will be ready for parents on all the improvements to Piscataway High School. And I'd like to acknowledge Mr. Olivera, who's not with us this evening, he manages that department. The sports staff get it all done. They get it, all the support items we need. She's not going to be happy about it, but Ms. Cabus, I hope you hear me. I hope you hear me. She doesn't miss a beat and none of the other people do. From telephone chains to communication to memos to everything, they hit it. The cabinet, you're very good, you're highly effective. I think we're a good working team and I appreciate you. Technology, I'm just getting over the meeting on generative artificial intelligence. Just getting over it. It was about a month ago. You know how it was, six hours. It was very interesting, but I appreciate your expertise. Principals, principals, I was a principal 16 years, most important job in education, sorry guys. Management and adaptive leadership. How do I move the building forward, all for you. It's a very important position, very important, and I value all of you. Supervisors, same thing, same thing. This summer, they all worked, the revisions to curriculum, the open court literacy program. One person trained all those teachers, Ms. Albanese trained them. We had people come in to support, but it's not only the training, it's the number of teachers that came to it. And now, the most important, the teacher. Whoa, that is the job. I did that for 16 years. You can influence a child just by who you are. Just by way, the way you make a child feel included. We maintain their safety, but a teacher has to make a child feel like they belong. Who are they, excepted for their individualization. And then, I'd also like to acknowledge the association leadership. Mr. Toma, Mr. Gonzalez, you're dedicated, you're focused on- Mr. Toma, Mr. Gonzalez, you're dedicated, you're focused on kids, and you're nobody's fool, either one of you. And I was able to visit five of our schools. The high school, I need a whole day. I'm not even going near it. No, I need a whole day. But I visited the schools. Shore School, Ms. Parker, I talked to the eighth grade. They were shocked. Because as I'm talking to them, I said, you know, when I was a principal, you know what I always told my students on Friday? I said, I always told my students, I love you very much. Not the way I love my children, because my own children I made mistakes with. You I can't. And I mean that. I am so comfortable in Piscataway because the love is a strong word. But when you have the advantage I do of seeing children all day long and our future all day long, you feel empowered. I'm a very, very nice person, but don't play with me when it comes to what's good for a kid. I don't care who you are. And this district shares that value base with me and I definitely appreciate it. Mr. Steele, what's going on? I've got two letters of commendation from parents about you. Good for you, Mr. Steele. I went to your building. Teachers were engaged, was excellent. Nakamak, you got it. You've got it together. When I pulled up, I said, I looked at my list, I said, do they open at eight? School is open, beautiful, teachers focused, kids focused. Arbor, same thing, everything in place. Randolphville, Grandview, was able to welcome Mr. Jackson, our new vice principal. And you walk through the building and our profession is going through changes. That's why you will be my last district I'm going to work in. Because I want to end on a note of positivity about my profession. And I told you at my first meeting, I needed you more than you needed me. And you showed and represent the value base of the profession. And I have to tell you, there are so many things happening in the country. There are so many things that we all witness. And the power of this district can take care of it. The two most in groups I must acknowledge are my students and the parents and guardians. Parents, don't give away your role. Own it. And at Piscataway, you all own it. I see it by the way your children are. They make eye contact with you. They know how to talk to you. They know how to laugh with you. They allow you to be you. And trust Piscataway School District. Under the leadership in this district, all other things fall into place and move forward. So well done. And the board, I commend you. I commend you. You're can be a little difficult. Never. But I commend you. And your salaries are astronomical. Zero-based income, can't beat that. But you ask good questions, you're relevant, you're serious about what you do, but yet your dispositions are humanistic and you acknowledge people. And the last group, I refer to them as my children. And this time, I'd like to announce some awards. Gary Miller, again, third year, announced as the New Jersey School Communication Award. He'll find out October 9th which award he got. Ms. Sterlachi, Best Community for Music Education, eight years running.
Excellent.
Come on.
Excellent.
Eight years?
Excellent.
Excellent.
And now we have a cup, another one. I was in Grandview. I knew it was Grandview.
Yes.
And I'm walking down the hall and I see in the nurse's office a door that says, Ms. Flannery, Tooth Wall of Fame. Any child who loses a tooth puts their name and date on the door. She gave me a picture of the last year's door. It's going to be in next year's superintendent, next month's superintendent's report. You should see this. So if any of you lose teeth, these are all mine. You see this? All mine, I'm not losing one. Go to the school and put it on the door. You know, if you get dentures, put a picture of dentures and put it on the door. But these are the things that bring a little element of joy and a sense of belonging. And that's my report for the seat.
Thank you, Dr. Roberto. Next, personnel and labor relations, Ms. Nancy Salgado-Cowen.
Yes. Be resolved that the following motions identified as items A through F be approved as presented.
Second.
Mr. Secretary, can you take the roll?
Dr. Connors.
Yes, King.
Abstain from B, yes to the rest.
Abstain from B?
Yes.
Dr. Nelson?
Yes.
Mr. Patel?
Yes.
Ms. Rivers?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Stafford?
Abstain from B, yes to the rest.
Ms. Salgado-Cowen?
Yes.
Ms. Cherry?
Yes.
Looking past her.
Thank you. Committee reports, there's two committees, I believe, who met for this year's meeting. We have fiscal plan and operations, Dr. Connors.
Yeah, the fiscal plans and operations committee met on Wednesday, September 3rd, to discuss the 2025-2026 budget, capital projects, summer upgrades and more. On the 2025-2026 budget, business office has processed over 2,700 purchase orders to begin school year. Health benefit expenditure expenses were significantly over budget in July and August. And administrators have been informed that purchase requests should be in line with budget requests. The 2024-2025 audit, the interim audit work was completed last week, the last week of July, and auditors began their end of the year fieldwork. Piscataway High School, Anthony Gym, that's the 1112 building water damage update. That the heavy rainstorm on July 14th caused damage in the PHS Anthony Gym, the athletic director's office and the trainer's room. The water entered the building from the floor drains and ground. The Anthony Gym floor was removed with remediation procedures to address mold and a new floor will be installed for the second marking period. And the Jersey School Insurance Group will cover most of the cost. Facility capital projects, Piscataway High School interior alterations. If you haven't been up to the high school, you'll see that there's lots of work going on. The work is proceeding on schedule with minor delays. The Anthony's principal's office area is open. Next to completed are the engineering classroom, nurses' suite and cafeteria. Acoustical upgrades, the admin building is complete except for follow-up testing to ensure acoustical standards. Anthony Gym is 95% complete. Piscataway High School intercom PA clock system, this is something that's been much needed.
Yeah.
There's two complexes up there in like 910 and 1112 building. And when they were connected, this never happened. So what we're doing is the contractor ran wires and installed the telephones and speakers in classrooms. They're working on hallways and offices. Activation's planned for December 31st, 2025. If you receive the pictures, there's actually, when you go down the hallways, you'll see, looks like you're in an airport, you'll see a digital clock and you can see it from different directions. And so that, and can actually be able also to put some messages, very short messages though, in case there's any emergencies and things, on those digital clocks or some space like our marquees. And they're still working on the hallways and offices. And again, the activations planned for December 31st, 2025. Solar panels, removal of solar panels is 80% complete. Mr. Olivera reviewed the next steps for installation of new solar panels at Piscataway High School in Quilltown. Fellowship farms, this is building preschool alterations. A design development meeting will take place in September 25th, I guess already took place. And the project remains on schedule for submission to the planning board, that's the township planning board, and bid period during October and November. Contract awarded in December, instruction from January 26th to August 26th. So basically, out here is where we're going to, expanding some of our preschool classrooms. Painting services, Promethean board installations. Painting contractors finished at Arbor, Eisenhower, MLK, Quilltown and Shore, August 15th. Interactive Promethean boards and whiteboards were installed at Eisenhower, MLK, Quilltown and Shore in coordination with classroom painting. Other summer projects, maintenance led to completion of the following projects during the summer. Bathroom conversion to MLK, classroom conversion to Shore, classroom cabinet upgrade at Eisenhower and MLK, new vinyl flooring in the main office suite at Eisenhower, new carpeting in the main office suite at Nakamak and Genesee for sanding and re-striping at Knollwood and Randolphville. And the custodians staff did an excellent job preparing buildings for the start of school. Something to be said about this and the painting is that what we often do is that we actually use people that are work in the, in the school, in the school system. And so that's where we get some of the painters from. And it was also somebody that did woodworking and they were able to do that upgrade that I just mentioned. Copy machine printer management, you know, we're a big district and we do a lot of copying and printing. What we're going into is each K through K school received their new additional copier for the start of school year. Replacement copiers will be delivered in stages over the next two months. And people are going to have a, I don't know what you call it. And you can actually plug into the copy machine and do your copying that way. You can actually program it, go to where you're going to, et cetera. Their replacement copiers will be delivered in stages over the next two months. District administration worked with the Atlantic Tomorrow's Office to install new paper cut print management system on existing copiers to ensure the new school year started with the system in place. Food service update, this, you know, this is a big thing. A lot of our, one of our big contractors, our food service vendor, and want to make sure that we're doing a great job there. So the food service equipment, the new short servicing line was installed and was operational for the start of school year. Arbor, Quilltown, Randolphville and Shore received new kitchen equipment. School meals and summer EBT applications, that actually is the new phrase for what was called the free and reduced lunch application. That's what it's called now. It's called school meals and summer EBT application. There were 2,171 applications ever received, 57% of which have been processed. 2,017 students qualify for free meals, 403 qualify for reduced and 132 qualify for NGEIE. NGIE, I believe, that's the state program. The governor put something in where beyond, there was like a certain salary, income level, and they went a little bit above that income level and provided more funding from the state to get more, qualify more kids for meals. Slightly more applications have been processed compared with last year. Qualifying students are in all three categories. But something to be mentioned here is that why food service is important is because besides these meals programs is that we work with machios and what machio is able to do with their contract and based on our subsidies that we get on the number, total number of meals served federally and from the state, it qualifies us for a certain amount of money. That amount of money working with machios is where the free breakfast comes.
Right.
And, you know, it, kids don't learn if you're hungry, if you're not, if you're hungry. And that's a great program that we've got going here in Piscataway. The school district is free breakfast. An email was sent to the class of 2025 regarding donations of funds. As of August, 600 dollars donated to 30 has been transferred and 200. So something else new we started is if students end up in Genesis with a, when they leave, that there's extra money, they can donate that money back for meals. Transportation update, the 2025-2026 school year got off to a strong start. Buses arrived mostly on time or, you know, and only a few routes experiencing ordinary start of school delays. And this is, you know, I've been here for a while and this, and each year it gets better and better. But there have been, you know, there have been communication problems in the past. And for the, we had a phone system upgrade and, et cetera, but we're doing pretty good. New Jersey School Business Legislative Update. At each one of these meetings, every time, since I'm affiliated with the New Jersey School Boards Association as one of the executive state officers, I like to go in and see what's happening legislatively, if it has any effect on our school district. And one of the main things that has an effect on our school district and every school district is the state aid that's appropriated every year. I'm also working with the New Jersey Coalition for Fair Funding Group. And we keep track of, and the mission is to keep track of, the state funding law. Right now, there is a bill in the Assembly, hasn't made it to the Senate yet, on modifying the state funding formula specifically in the equalization aid area. I sat in on a Zoom the other day and it actually, it's sponsored by Coughlin, who is the speaker of the Assembly. So, you know, he's got skin in the game there. And we're hoping that as New Jersey School Boards advocates and as local school boards advocate and coalitions advocate, that eventually we will make this funding formula as fair as it possibly can be so we don't wind up, you know, so there's no more winners and losers. Business office update, this is something that's really important. The first one is investment account, is you're always looking for, you have limited revenue. Limited revenue that can come into school districts. This was a great idea that through the New Jersey Asset Research Management Program, Piscataway now takes advantage of taking certain portions of its funds and invest them and we get returns. And we put $20 million in, we've made over a million, 1.5 million dollars since we've done this. And it gets split 60/40. And I believe 40% of that goes to our general fund, the other goes to the capital projects. So we're taking money that necessarily would sit there, investing it, and it's another revenue source that we get. And as you'll see.
I thought it was the opposite. I thought it was.
It's either 60/40, it's, it's one or the other. But the thing is that money goes into the general fund besides capital projects for doing this.
Right.
And the committee reviewed the current balance and we have a good interest rate. And that, and Madam Chairman, is my report.
Six and a half minutes.
Thank you. Thank you. All right, policy and legislative.
I said you spoke for six and a half minutes.
I know.
It was very good.
Very concise.
Okay, Ms. Smith, policy and legislative.
Thank you. Policy and legislative committee meeting met on Wednesday, September 4th, 2025 to discuss an AI resolution, new policy proposals, filming at school events and more. The committee discussed a sample resolution on artificial intelligence promoted by the National Education Association and agreed that Mr. Rubin would prepare a modified version, more closely aligned with the artificial intelligence policy already being adopted by the board for consideration by the committee. The committee discussed and approved the following policies and regulations to be placed on the Board of Education agenda for first reading. Policy 0174 Legal Services, policy revised. Policy 0177 Professional Service revised. Policy and Regulation 1570 Internal Contracts Revised. Policy 1620 Administrative Employment Contracts Revised. Policy 2422 Statutory Curricular Requirements Revised. And Policy and Regulation 6220 Budget Preparation Revised. The committee considered the following policy language addressing outside organizations, agencies and individuals using school events for their own promotional purposes. School events such as plays, concerts, graduation ceremonies and athletic competitions are intended primarily for the enjoyment of students, their families and other members of the school community. It is the policy of the Board of Education that outside organizations, government agencies and government officials shall not use such events as backdrops for their own public relations or other self-promotional activities, shall adhere to the provisions of Policy 3324 and 4324 regarding the recording of students and staff members and shall refrain from employing professional-level recording on or broadcasting equipment at such events without the express written permission of the superintendent of schools or his designate. The committee deferred action on this proposal until a future meeting to allow for further consideration by committee members. Mr. Rubin briefed the committee on recent legislation upgrading the certification and training requirements for school counselors to ensure they are equipped to address students' mental health needs. And that concludes our report.
Thank you, Ms. Smith. Approve of minutes, Ms. Rivers?
Yes.
Yes, be it resolved that the following minutes be approved as submitted for this meeting, August 14th, 2025, and the executive session, August 14th, 2025.
You have a second?
Second.
I just have one comment to make, that it just needs to be corrected. There's a, it carried over to tonight's agenda. Somewhere in here, it's, uh, on pupil services, which is XV1, the X is missed, missing. So when they do the agenda next time, so when you get, so say it's on page 25 of our agenda.
25?
Of our agenda, if you look there, it says V1, it should be XV1. And if you look back at the, the minutes of the agenda, someone needs to go in before, because they keep perpetuating, it's like the third time it's happened and I find.
Duly noted.
Thank you, Mr. Connors.
You got it, Davis.
All in favor?
I have no idea what happened, couldn't, I just missed what, okay.
There was an error that Tom found, that he's bringing to everyone's attention so it can go in and be fixed.
Okay.
So that, so the numbering is correct?
To correct the numbering.
Okay, I'm sorry, thank you.
Okay.
I was confused.
And now, Mr. Rubin was asking for approval.
All in favor?
All in favor, yes, got it.
Okay, it's approved. Have a motion to open public comments from the floor?
Motion.
Have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Have a motion to close public comments from the floor?
Motion.
Have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Public comments are closed. Fiscal plan and operations, Dr. Connors.
Be it resolved, following motions identified as items A and K be approved as presented.
Second. Mr. Secretary, can you take, Mr. Rubin, can you take the roll?
Mr. King?
Yes.
Dr. Nelson?
Yes.
Mr. Patel?
Yes.
Ms. Rivers?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Stafford?
Yes.
Dr. Connors?
Yes.
Ms. Salgado-Cowen?
Yes.
Ms. Cherry?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Policy, Ms. Smith?
Okay, be it resolved that the following motions identified as items A and B be approved for as presented.
Second. Mr. Secretary, can you take the roll?
Can I just make one comment, though, on the policies on budget? On the third page, there's no specific language about the process of the budget, and it also ending up eventually being in a plain language on our, on our website.
Correct.
So.
So noted. Mr. Rubin?
Dr. Nelson?
Yes.
Mr. Patel?
Yes.
Ms. Rivers?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Stafford?
Yes.
Dr. Connors?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Ms. Salgado-Cowen?
Yes.
Ms. Cherry?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Curriculum, Mr. Patel?
Be it resolved that the following motions identified as item A through C be approved as presented.
Second, thank you. Mr. Sec, uh, Mr. Rubin, can you take the roll?
Mr. Patel?
Yes.
Ms. Rivers?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Stafford?
Yes.
Dr. Connors?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Dr. Nelson?
Yes.
Ms. Salgado-Cowen?
Yes.
Ms. Cherry?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Pupil services, Dr. Nelson?
Be it resolved that the following motion identified as item A be approved as presented.
Second. Mr. Rubin, can you take the roll?
Ms. Rivers?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Stafford?
Yes.
Dr. Connors?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Dr. Nelson?
Yes.
Ms. Patel?
Yes.
Ms. Salgado-Cowen?
Yes.
Ms. Cherry?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Administrative and auxiliary, Ms. Stafford?
Be it resolved that the following motions identified as A through C be approved as presented. Second. Mr. Rubin, can you take the roll?
Uh, Madam Chair, just a quick comment there. Thank you, Piscataway Soccer Club, item B.
Yes.
They are donating two soccer nets for the field at a value of almost 3,000 each. They're on wheels and they're easy to put around. Thank you, Piscataway Soccer Club.
I guess the record will reflect that Mr. Patel will be abstaining from the item one here, that's reflecting his own travel.
Yes, I see, yes.
So I'll just assume that.
Yes.
Uh, Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Stafford?
Yes.
Dr. Connors?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Dr. Nelson?
Yes.
Mr. Patel with that abstention?
Yes.
Ms. Rivers?
Yes.
Ms. Salgado-Cowen?
Yes.
Ms. Cherry?
Yes.
All business, anybody but all business.
Madam President, I just had the, mentioned previously that we would look into possibly having a retreat in the new year. It was brought to my attention that we might want to schedule one sooner, so just to, everyone just get to me as soon as possible, dates that you may have before November, for Saturdays, for a two-to-three-hour board retreat. Whether Saturdays or Sundays work best for you, please indicate and email me every week. Thank you.
Anyone else, all business?
Well, you know, I, I keep saying we're going to continue with our master school board, um, certification, when you visit school boards, but in talking with the vice president and so on, these other things, I think it would be benefit if we waited for the new superintendent to come on, because then it would be part of that, so.
Or the team.
Yeah, part of things, we need five and a half credits to get to 10 credits by, a year from November. So I'm recommending that after we have this retreat and after the superintendent comes on board, we pick some topics and we continue with that, and it count towards that certification.
Good, that sounds, yeah.
Good point.
We'll roll it in, yes, thank you.
Yep, definitely.
All right, new business?
I wanted to ask, may I?
Sure.
Dr. Connor, what's the timeline on the budget, on the funding?
On the funding?
Yeah.
Um, it, it's the same, except part of that legislation too, actually, there's going to be, they want a portal to say, you know, when it's going to be told to the districts and et cetera. So we're trying to get more transparency as well as, uh, notice earlier on in the process.
And did they give any overview as to the data or the criteria for the, you know, the funding?
The, um.
And where would I get additional information on that, NJDOE website, legislation?
On, on this particular legislation?
Yeah.
Yeah. Under New Jersey School Boards, under the government relations, there's a, you, and you can reference the bill and you can go look at what the bill is.
I have to tell you, I'm going to do that. Thank you so very much.
No problem. Have a motion for adjournment?
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. We are adjourned.